Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 25, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call with a clerk. Please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Morning.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers, as the rules of council state, that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our only registered speaker this morning is Naomi Mullen.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Bon Air Elementary School Building once was a shining example of what a city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. The residents at the time of the construction did not want or approve of anything but a school to exist there. We, property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say, take it down. Hello?
We can hear.
According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no government. Here is the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, Park's entries, Pittsburgh's tax funds should be used to make it a green space. And six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. This was read at my husband's funeral. Michael J. Mullen reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired deputy fire chief touched the lives of many people. An uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name, and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters through years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Join our supporters, Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Denham, for the creation of a green space. The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of our community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Anyone wishing to speak in front of council and chambers, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. He's coming forward.
Ludwig, you can speak now.
Oh.
Yes, you can.
Thank you. My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street, Squirrel Hill, and I'm here today to read the Riot Act. You'll say, what's the Riot Act? This group referred to as the Council of the City of Pittsburgh in 2003 voted in Management Budget Revenue Opportunities Act. It's in the vault. I'm the father of it, and in the presentation, I originally said, and I expect to be compensated. Geez, the silence was deafening. And the years go by. My wife died, took up, kept me away from here. What is it that I'm standing here about? We've said that we have a shooting problem, so I separated the bill and said, fine, the bill for Management Budget Revenue Opportunities Act goes to the law office for lawsuit against the City of Pittsburgh. We don't want anything unless we succeed in reducing the number of shootings in the City of Pittsburgh, and then it'll probably, by methodology, go across this entire nation. And what is it that I'm really pointing at? I'm pointing at Dan Quinlan, the captain of the police force, a man with 55 years of experience, and we're willing to go ahead and lay out the plan with Tom Kunchke, the acting head of the police department, in order to give an attempt, and we don't want anything unless we succeed in reducing the number of shootings by 20 percent. Are you chicken? You haven't behaved. Some of you are so new that you don't even know who I am. I've only stood here for twenty, for some 25 years, and I just passed my 90th birthday, but I'm still coming here. Why? Because it's needed. There's nobody who's addressing the problem.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
This is birthday?
This is just past.
And happy birthday to you. Happy belated birthday. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood. You'll be given your three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District at 715 Mercer Street. I was listening to the news, and I became very upset. I heard where Altoona, so that's Altoona, PA, where they made a decision that their guards in the schools will be carrying, like, AK-47, submachine guns. They're going to be carrying them. They're going to have them in the school. Now, I had said before, when they were talking about that, when my son was living, that if they start bringing guns in the school, I would take my son out. I would homeschool him because he would be the first one shot because he was very dark, very dark. The dark people in city council, we get treated differently from what the light complected. I'm going to show you what I mean. You have Tim Stevens, who came down to speak with the police. They had all women from different agencies, but Tim Stevens spoke, and as he got to speaking, he says, well, the police, to the police officer, I have mixed children. Now, I became very upset because mixed children, you know, he's light complected. I think his wife or the woman is Mexican, so them children are very light complected. My son was dark, darker than me. My son died because of the color of his skin. Tim Stevens, and I said it then, because he came down and I said, Tim, why was it necessary for him to say he had mixed children? Why was it necessary? Why? Because of what he's saying. You policemen, if you run up against some light complected Stevens, their minds don't kill them. Don't give them a hard time. But my son was on the ground, begging, on the floor, begging for his life. You just don't understand. Just some people said, one woman in the building said, would you have these papers? I said, it's about my son. She said, he's been dead so long, forget about it. And I looked at her and I said, have you ever had a child? She said, no. And I said, well, then you would never understand what a mother feels. I am a woman that came down here to fight for the community, and my son believed in coming down here. My son would say, mommy, they can't stand you because you tell the truth. Part of the problem is that I speak loud, and that's a part of me. That's me. When I speak loud, but I'm telling the truth. A lot of people don't want you to speak loud while you're telling the truth. They want you to whisper in the corner, in the back room like hens do. And Ms. Smith, I wanted to see about moving back in my house. Remember you had said before I was going to get help? Then I never did, even with the type, even with the computer you said I would get. Never did. Now, I took, and I'm trying to find that information. They say it's in Harrisburg, Ms. Smith. Harrisburg, I can't find it. My daughter's trying to email this woman, whoever it is. We can't get her. Then I came down here. I thought it would be downtown. I can go to the office. No, it's Harrisburg. How come we can't get in touch with her? I need help. You promised me years ago. That's why I don't live where I live at now, why I live where I live at now. So please follow up on your promises. Help me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Flora L. Shapiro Williams, and I live at 715 Mercer Street. The reason I'm here, I was down here talking about the security. You would think it would get a little better because it's been exposed. Now, we have people breaking in the laundry room, tearing off the money machines off the wall. Now, we have to suffer because they're going to close at 4:30 PM. They used to stay open all night. You can wash all night. Now, if you don't wash before 4:30, you're not allowed downstairs. They closed the machine, the room where you watch television, because people are letting wrong people in because we don't have security. Now, I found this solution, but I need help. I need help. I need someone. And there's so many people in the building that they let people from the Western Side automatically just move in without no one looking over, over them to see what they're doing, and they're doing whatever they want, because they don't know better. They know they don't know better because they brought them straight from Western Side into the building where I live. And it is getting worse. You just don't have a chance to even walk around in your building without having fear of being attacked, robbed, or God forbid what else they'll do to us. There's women in their building that's still in the hospital suffering from getting beat up and robbed. It does not make sense that we have to live like this. I know something. If we can get security there and maybe get a grant or something to help the seniors pay for the security, because we're going to have to have something, or else they might as well just tear the building down and start over, because we don't have a chance living there in fear. We should not have to be afraid to go and wash our clothes, afraid to come in from shopping, that someone is going to attack us, that we're going to be attacked. So I'm going to give my phone number, and anyone that feel the need to help out, any way to help me write a petition to get security in our buildings. My phone number is area code 412-692-0243, and I will repeat it again in case you need to get a pencil. Area code 412-692-0243. Thank you. Please help us.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Any other speakers? Seeing none, that will move us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill 1072.
Bill 1072, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, by Creating a New Chapter 550, Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Grosh is on line. I'm assuming.
Yes, I'm sorry. You all, thank you. In fact, we're going, we're having a series of community meetings, and there's a quite lengthy process of coordinating, as Councilman Kraus knows, coordinating with RPP expansion. And our RPP process changed, if council members will recall last year, when we changed that ordinance. So we'd like to just make sure we're taking our time. We're working with DOMA. We're working with the Parking Authority, and we're working with the neighborhood groups and the residents to make sure that we just go through this. It's kind of like going through the process for the first time. DOMA has not actually executed and implemented the new RPP process before. So we're going to, we're going to take our time here, and so I'm going to motion to hold for eight weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held eight weeks. Bill 1108.
Bill 1108, Ordnance Amending Title II, Article V, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayor's designee thereunder, the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees thereunder in accordance with Ordnance 237, Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Councilman Kraus, we have a motion to hold for two weeks. This is under his name?
No, it's under.
Oh, it's under yours. Okay. Motion to hold for two weeks.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Go ahead.
Motion to hold for two weeks. And second, and I just want to say briefly that I want to thank Ricky Moody, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess, and the mayor's office for all working together. I think, I believe Dan Freeeson and Kim in my office, Kim Salin Etro, are all working together to come up with a good reporting system for the public without preventing us from doing the things that we need to do. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I just want to say I do support this. Obviously, we want clear accounting when the city is, is giving money to external organizations to do work. But I also want to say that I would like to see, see a formula for this for all organizations, not just the Stop the Violence Fund. So.
Can I respond to that, please?
Yeah.
So just so you know, our budget director, our solicitor, and our finance chair and others are working with the administration on making sure we have that accountability with all the trust funds, and we're also working with the Controller's Office, too. So I just want to say there's quite a few people working on it. There's, I think, 87 trust funds, and so we want to make sure we're getting a handle on all of them. This is the one that's most immediate that's being spent, that they could address, you know, quickly before the money starts being allocated.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of a two-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill will be held two weeks. That takes us to Bill 1115.
Bill 1115, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of John Connors and His Attorneys, O'Brien, Coleman &amp; Wright, LLC, in the Amount of $90,000 in Settlement of Litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 1127.
Bill 1127, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Robert Gilbert and His Attorneys' Law Offices of Joel Sandstone in the Amount of $10,000 in Settlement of Litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bill will be held for executive session. Bill 1128.
Bill 1128, Resolution Designating Banks and Lending Institutions to Act as Depositories for the Year 2023 in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article III Depositories.
At the request of Director Ghula, will someone offer up a motion to hold one week?
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1129.
1129, Resolution Providing for Professional Services Agreement or Agreements or Existing Agreements for Consulting Services but Not Limited to Auditing, Accounting, and Technical Services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards. Moved. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, P-cards?
No, no on my part, please, Mr. Chair.
One no, P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety, Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 1139.
Bill 1139, Ordnance Amending Pittsburgh City Code, Chapter 604, Curfew, Section 604.09.
A motion to approve with discussion, please.
Discussion. Yes, please. Second.
And I'll defer to our council president.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your patience with all this, and thank you to the members. I think there's just been a lot of controversy over this bill. I mean, it always seems to be controversial when you want to help kids not be shot on the streets. But I'll just say that I want us to vote this down, but I don't want to table it because I don't want to take the chance of we, if we, the mayor changes his mind or decides he needs it, then we want to make sure we put it in. I'm going to vote this down, and I'm going to introduce a new bill, waive the rules of council, to introduce a new bill. And I want to thank Dan Freeeson for his tremendous work. He's been doing a lot of work on this, in the clerk's office as well. But I really want to thank the administration for working with us and through the concerns. I think we, it's no, I'll talk about the rest of it when we get to this part of the, when we introduce this bill. But for right now, I'm just asking to please vote it down until we have an opportunity to discuss more.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
No.
No.
Opposed.
No.
Opposed.
So negative recommendation on Bill 1139. With that, Councilman Kraus, will you entertain a motion from council president to waive the rules of council so that Bill 11, I think it's 61, can be introduced?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Motion to waive rules for introduction of the new bill.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? A Bill 1161 is now on the table. Madam President?
Thank you. And I just want to, again, thank the administration. Okay, motion to approve. Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Lavelle, for keeping us on track there.
Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Madam President, will you indulge me one second? Should we not read the purpose of the bill before we approve it?
Good suggestion. That's why you were council president for six years.
Thank you, Madam President.
Bill 1161, Resolution to Establish a Youth Family Resource Center Advisory Committee.
No motion to approve. Discussion. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. What discussions, please?
Second. Second. Thank you, Councilman. And so I just, again, want to thank everyone for their indulgence with this, this entire process. It's been really, it's actually kind of sad to me because I, one of the things I think that we were trying to do was just have a conversation. People think that we introduced the curfew as was and as is, and misunderstood with the, the intention was just, let's have a conversation. Our kids, I want to just be honest, the, two of the most knowledgeable people in this area on violence prevention are Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle, and they put together a team that know a lot, too. So I just want to thank them for their work on preventive, preventive measures. And there's a lot of preventive measures in place. But what's happening is every day, there's a shooting in this, in this region, every single day. Incidents with police officers are not something people want, but they also, that doesn't happen as frequent, I don't believe, or there's no reporting of it, that it happens every day in the way that the violence is happening. And it's not, every day, there's not a kid either fighting for their life or an innocent bystander hit by bullets. Our families are asking for something immediate. They're asking for intervention, not prevent, not necessarily just prevention. They want an intervention right now. They want something to stop. And I think that the mayor thinks that, you know, and I could, came together and we agreed on, at least the centers could be part of that solution. And I think it's a conversation that has to continue, but our kids don't have time for us to discuss this forever. Our families don't want to hear that we, it's going to take years before we change a culture. They want to know what we're doing today to stop their kids from being shot and from having to worry about their families and their loved ones. And not even just the families that are being shot, but the people whose kids are doing the shootings. It's like, families are affected on both sides and losing loved ones to this violence across the city. We're losing, and we keep saying the only way to bring kids to a different place is to employ kids and put a paycheck in their hands, but we're also pushing businesses out of the city. Our kids are probably going to have to go to Cranberry to get a job. We keep it up. And so I'm just saying, there's a lot going on here, and a lot of discussions, and a lot of people who say they're experts in this area, and a lot of people we've been listening to for a long time, but the violence is increasing, the shootings are continuing. And I think that for us, the bottom line is, what can we do? And I thought, maybe just get a curfew, get the kids off the street into a safer place, give them a safe place to go. I didn't ever think how we would enforce it, but I think part of the enforcement could be if we ever decide to revisit that. I just want to say, we could come up with safety shuttles and kids can voluntarily go. We can come up with, you know, work with the Chill Mobile and AHN to do some things to make sure that we have kids, you know, voluntarily going to these centers. But the real problem, I, that I think, are the kids that are doing the shootings, which is a small percentage. I think that they aren't going to voluntarily go to a center. And so I think you need somebody like an outreach worker, or somebody who's going to be able to work and reach the kids and, and get them into the centers. I do not think that, and I also think, after talking to some of the kids, sometimes we can be used for their scapegoat. They're not going to say, hey, I can't go shoot that kid tomorrow to the, people tell them to go shoot somebody because I have to go to the, I decided to go to a resource center, and I'm going to go back in the community tomorrow, and everything's going to be fine with the community. We all know that they're going to be at risk if they do something like that. So what we want to do is make sure that they have, that we, if they need an excuse and they need to blame us because they're going for help, then blame us. But I, but I also don't want to see anything escalating. But I do think that this piece right here is really important, and I, we're going to put a committee together, the mayor and I, we're going to work together on this because we understand that it's important for the City of Pittsburgh, for us to collaborate and to work together to do things that are preventive down the road. But I think we also immediately need some type of intervention, but we're going to have to, I think the committee will talk a little bit about what that should be, what it could be, what it would look like. But I think this, right now, they're charged with just coming up with resource centers. And I think for, I can tell you, as somebody who worked with parents for Pittsburgh Public Schools running parent resource centers, I can tell you that there's a lot of need out there. There's a lot of people that need help, and, you know, and there's a lot of people that know how to do it. But there, parents need help, and there's not, what people don't understand- don't understand, there's a lot of kids not in their home with their parents, they're in foster care. And so there needs to be some more conversations with CYF and the, and the whole entire foster care system, because there's some amazing people helping with, helping our kids, but there's also a lot of kids being abused from home to home to home that they go to. And nobody's, nobody's doing, I mean, I feel like there's not a lot of people working in those areas to like, like draw attention to it publicly. They may be doing a lot of things privately, but I know people who've gone through the system and have been, really had suffered a lot, so the, I think there's a larger conversation, but I think these centers can also help serve parents, foster parents, children, obviously children, we really want to get them there, but we really want to get the parents there as well, and I think one of the things we need to do is also realize that there's grandparents raising kids too, and there's a lot of second time around grandparents raising kids. And one of the people I know is Nancy Hornsby, who did it up in the Hill District for a long time, and she's so knowledgeable and she's actually back at Pittsburgh Public Schools where she actually started all this stuff. So I think having her at the table would also be really important because she's really knowledgeable about what parents need, she, she really set the bar high in things that they can, that they can do and expectations high, but she also knew how to provide a lot of services. So I think that's what we need to, we need to make sure that we're, there's a place people can go when they're off work, you know, when times are convenient for them, and a safe place for kids to be when they don't want to be in that abusive home, when they don't want to be on the streets, but they're afraid to go home sometimes. So I think this is a great start for us and I'm going to thank the mayor because I think that he has done a lot in working with this and talking about this and what we should do, and he is already working on what it would take to open those centers across the city. And I think it's a great time for us to call on our partners to maybe get some shuttles, maybe get some of the facilities open, and so I think that he's going to be good at doing all that. But we'll put, we're going to put a committee together. So I want to thank the mayor and his team.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I just, well, first, I did want to formally request to, to be on the committee as well, and I, I want to thank you, Council President, for, you know, we've had very candid discussions about this and I appreciate that, you know, and, you know, we all, we all are, have, have the welfare of our youth in mind. I would say as well, you know, when it comes to, to, to these solutions and these committees, I, I just, I, I want to stress again that, you know, we are, we, we have made a significant investment in Stop the Violence Fund and working with community groups who are on the ground, dealing with these situations, and so I think that it's critical that those groups be heavily involved in, in these, these solutions, right, of creating, because at the end of the day, when it comes to getting the kids into, right, whatever those centers may look like, whatever those places are, it's the, the adults living and working in the communities that are going to be the ones who are going to be able to do that, so, yeah. But at any rate, I, I think this is a good idea, and it would be nice to get this plan in place, you know, by late spring, right, in time for summer.
I'll just respond to that, there is a timeframe, I want to, and we, we, the mayor and I both hope it will be open by late, by spring, early summer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to say thank you. I applaud your efforts, I really do, you know, it's the first tangible thing I've seen in front of us that could make a difference. And I want to reiterate, you know, your, your intention of this. We spoke for 45 minutes the night before you turned this bill in, okay, the original bill, and not one time in that conversation was brought up, oh, the police will have to remove them from the street and bring them to the detention center. That was never part of your plan. You know, we've always figured it was going to be, whether it be the Stop the Violence folks or somebody, or hopefully voluntarily, some of these kids, you know, will, will come into the office, so, so I just want to applaud your efforts. You know, I hate to see your intention be stretched to the point where people were saying, you know, just kind of not representing it as, as, as what it was, so. I'd like to also be a co-sponsor in the new bill if I could, and again, I applaud your efforts and I think it's a great idea. I actually even have a place identified that I think will be perfect in my neighborhood for such a thing, so, has a gym, has a basketball court, you know, so give these kids activities and something to do, so. So, so thanks again, appreciate it, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to working with you and the administration.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just briefly, I just want to, do you mind? Thank you.
Second round, Madam President?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that I know people can spin things, that's part of the job, it's part of the politics, it's part of what we sign up for, but I am thankful that yesterday I went to a meeting in the community and all through this whole process, the community has called and thanked me for doing something, for having this conversation, and they're happy that the mayor is also agreeable to these centers, they like the idea of the center, a lot of people do. But people do want sometimes a way to understand how they can get their kids, they want to protect their kids too, a lot of people want to protect their kids. It's not just, but it's not just parents, it's across the board, there's people calling out for some type of prevention and intervention. It, prevention's great, and these programs that we, that you guys have put in place, I think they are going to make a difference, I think they started to make a difference, but there's a couple of things. One, police are not going to not be part of the equation somewhere along the line. There are some kids that are going to need some help. I think there are some people that want to open, there's talk about opening Schuman Center and on the county level that they want to open something so the kids aren't going to jail, but I want to get kids so they're never getting a criminal record in the first place. So if we can stop and help kids with prevention and preventative programs, programs and interventions first, let's do that before they get to a point where they have a darn record. Everybody assumes kids are going to have a record and get a record. That doesn't have to be their life, and I want the kids to know that. And I'm fortunate enough to know that a lot of the kids call me mom in the community, as you know, and so they've called me and they've told me some stuff. So I think that I'm comfortable with where I am with all this and with the community especially, I know what the community's saying and I know what other people are saying, and I do think that there's, there's some reason for concern for some of the stuff that, you know, and, and I think that the way the law was written, it is, if we ever do do a curfew, it's going to have to be rewritten, because it was written in 1995. Policing has changed since 1995, so there's a lot of things that have changed since then, but mostly, the conversation has to be, what are we doing today to stop the violence on the, in the streets of Pittsburgh? What are we doing to help our kids get on the, a track where they never have to make a mistake or make a decision that they, that puts their lives in, in, in danger or their families? As one of the kids said to me one day, it's easy for everybody to sit around this table and talk, but you're not looking over the shoulder waiting for somebody to see if somebody's going to shoot you or your family. And that's real, to walk down the street and have to worry about that. That's real. And, you know, we've all been affected with, by violence, people that we love and care about have been shot and killed or involved in something, or have been the shooters. My future daughter-in-law just called me the other day, she taught the kid that was involved in the shooting, the, in one of the shootings, I'll just say this, he was involved in one of the shootings that happened recently, and she said she remembers back when he was 10 years old going into a classroom and pretending he was shooting kids in the classroom at 10. And yet, somebody failed him, a lot of people failed him throughout all those years. And there's been a lot of groups involved and a lot of people, and I think that there's a lot of groups that know a lot of stuff and we need to tap into some of them, but there's also been a lot that made getting help to that kid difficult. So I just think that it's a conversation we have to really have, it has to be a real conversation, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, the direction in which we're going with this now is the exact intent that you portrayed to me the night before you turned that legislation in. And I think it's very important to reach kids at a younger age, even younger than teenagers, to intervene and to talk to them about violence. And I know, Councilman Lavelle, you and, and Reverend Burgess, you know, you've done a lot of work in this area, and I want to continue to reach out into the schools, the younger kids like this, and this is just one way that we can reach a younger crowd and, you know, get to them before they start making bad decisions. And I still call you mom, too.
Yeah, well, now I have eight kids call me grandma, so.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll simply say you're not, you're correct when you say it can't simply be intervention, there has to be intervention, there has to be prevention, as well as even punishment at times, unfortunately. And we have invested in all of them, and this is another way to really have prevention. Intervention works in many respects on the could-be shooters, but the prevention, the intervention model works on the would-be shooters, and so this is consistent with the efforts that we've been working on for years now, so I thank you for bringing this forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will move us on to our Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess. We have the first new paper, which is Bill 1124.
Bill 1124, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1125.
Bill 1125, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreement with the County of Allegheny and partner for work for the shared operation and administration of the 2023 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one deferred paper, Bill 860.
Bill 860, resolution instructing the director of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works to amend the rules and regulations for sports field permits to provide priority use to athletic organizations comprised of city of Pittsburgh residents.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
I'll defer to the bill sponsors, Councilwoman Wilson, Council President, Kail Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, I think Councilwoman Strasburger, and before you, I passed around an amendment, but I realize this is, you know, a new amendment that members haven't seen, and so I'd like to amend and hold today, so I make the motion to, motion to amend.
You're amend by substitution?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't have that in place, I have all the, yeah, so motion to, oh, I'm sorry. So, actually, before we amend, I can just walk through a couple of things, I was going to explain a little bit afterwards, but, you know, the permitting issue comes up from time to the time, especially with a new strategy that's, it's kind of been implemented a couple of years ago. It was kind of an in-house thing we've learned about from, from DBW and the permitting office that, you know, in the past, there was organizations that had the permit for basically whatever time they wanted to use the field, and as, as different organizations come up and to try and give new opportunities to, to these organizations, and, and also our investment in the fields to make them better, there's been a, an increased demand for, for the field time. And with that, there's been some, some, you know, some complications that have, have arisen, and I think in a couple districts, especially in my district, not especially, but in my district, it's happened, which, which kind of brought me to the table here whenever the, the council president put this bill on the, on the table, what we talked about previously, but, you know, this is something that I was looking forward to working on, and we worked with the Department of Public Works, the administration, and also council president, and, is there another department we worked on? Who was it? DBW? It, Parks and Rec, yeah, Parks and Rec was, was there as well. And basically, there was an in-house kind of, you know, priority list, and we'd like to formalize that into the official record so that we can just all be on the same page with what's happening with permitting, and so you can see clearly here, we're first priority, second priority, third priority, fourth priority, so there's several different priorities. One is, you know, schools, it's all focused on youth through the top four, since that is a large topic of conversation right now, especially with the council president's bill to form the advisory committee, so this is, you know, I believe this is an effort to also, just to increase the amount of usage of the fields that's dedicated to, to youth. And then further down the line, you'll see where, you know, there are adult leagues that can, can be, you know, grant a permit as well. So I'll run for discussion, but at the end of the discussion, I'd like to bring it back and, and amend the bill and hold.
Okay, so we're still in discussion of the original bill. Council President Smith and Councilwoman Warwick?
Well, I just simply want to thank Councilwoman Wilson for working on this, and Mohammed in his office has been amazing, and our director, Chris Warstein, has been very helpful, but I do have some concerns with some of the things and we'll work through those over the week. But the reason we put this forward, I think the bottom line is, we need more fields in the city of Pittsburgh, and I keep asking for an adult field because I think it'd be great to have a place where young people, well, don't have to be young, my husband still plays ball and, you know, 60, so I think that there's, I think there's things that we can do to help all people enjoy the city of Pittsburgh, but I really do think that we need a facility, and other cities, they have some amazing facilities, and I know the director shares that he would love to have that and put that in place, and I don't think it'd cost a lot, and I think we could get partners to help build that. And I think that's the solution long-term, is that we need more fields, and we especially need more fields for adults, because that's the problem, is a lot of our kids sometimes are getting pushed off fields for adults, and, but some of those adults are kids that are at risk and are, you know, kids that do need help, so you don't want to see them not have field time too, so that's why I think there has to be some way that we address this a little bit better and give the director the tools that he needs to enforce things the way, and prioritize things that they, way they would like. But I also, I'm going to keep the rest of my comments to myself since we'll be able to work, since we're going to hold this and work on it later. But thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Warwick?
Um, yeah, first of all, I want to say thank you, I, this, this priority system is nice, that putting the youth sports ahead, that's, but, and not to be a fly, a fly in the ointment, but just, this is the first time I'm seeing this, is just because in my district, it, it jumped out that the fourth priority for, for youth sports leagues that don't fit the previous criteria, I just, immediately what jumps to mind are local leagues that are neighborhood-specific and therefore historically have had a, you know, sort of had priority over a few, you know, for example, you know, Greenfield Baseball, they have Bud Hammer Field, right, they're not a, and, and if, if somehow city sports suddenly took priority over the GBA at Bud Hammer or took priority over the Hazelwood Cobras at Burgwin, that would be, be a problem for a team, it'd be a big headache for me, I know. So just in the, you know, as this discussion continues, and I'm happy to weigh in as well as needed, but to, to keep that in mind, that there are these very localized leagues that are serving the kids in the neighborhood, and so it's important for them to have their neighborhood field.
Can I respond to that? Because this is my question.
Done.
Yeah, that's.
Any?
I'm sorry.
Because Council President wants to get back in, second round. Anyone else first round? If, oh, the second round, okay. If, uh, second round, okay. If not, um, and we, we don't have to do it here, Councilwoman Wilson, but I do have, upon this initial review of it, I do have questions and some concerns with it, um, but I can ask them here or we can just meet offline. Uh, second round, Council President.
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, to Councilwoman Warwick, I absolutely agree with this. I'm going to write this day down. We agree 100% on this one, because that's why I actually put this in place, so I am going to move that on there. Um, there's a, it's great to put our public schools as a priority, and we do work with our public schools, but when you look at the number of kids in the city of Pittsburgh now, not attending Pittsburgh Public, it's probably higher than the kids attending Pittsburgh Public, um, because there's a lot of kids that attend charter schools, Christian schools, um, just all different types of school, I mean, home schooled, everything. And so I think we had 44,000 kids in the city, I honestly don't know the number now, that was a couple of years ago, I checked, and only 22,000 attend Pittsburgh Public, or less than 22,000 attend Pittsburgh Public, I believe. So I want to make them a priority, but I want to also make sure we're not pushing people off the fields that might not attend Pittsburgh Public, but yet are part of a league that's been around forever. And this all started with the dynamos, um, bringing stuff to our attention too, but then it was, Councilwoman Wilson had a concern with something in his district, and then I had something in, um, Elliot Athletic Association. There was a lot of different, Westwood, Oakwood, there was a lot of people bringing concerns to our attention. And so we're like, okay, these people are keeping our kids off the field all the ti, on, off the streets and on fields and into something productive all the time, and we should be making their job easier, not more difficult. So with that said, I think we've got to find a way to blend in the Pittsburgh Public importance, the importance of that and priority, but we're also prioritizing our local people. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, the, the concern that you have is the exact concern, the reason why I got involved in, in understanding how the permit process is, is taking place, and the reason why we're working on the bill. So that was, I guess I hammered that point over and over again in our, in our discussion. And, uh, it was a good conversation because the whole conversation was focused on, uh, how to make field permitting equitable for everyone. And, uh, after revisiting it, I'm not saying this is solid plan, but, um, it is good to help have a, a good conversation about, um, you know, how everyone can have a, an opportunity to permit the field. Um, and, uh, I don't, I'm not putting this on the table to say that this is how it has to be, and this is perfect.
It's nothing.
Uh, I want to put this in the public's eyes so that, so that we can have this public discussion.
I, I'd like to call for a public hearing too, so I'll do that when you're done.
Uh, Councilwoman Warwick.
And just one more thought that I just kind of had is, you know, when it comes to the public school versus private school, you know, the sort of these, is, is maybe, maybe a way to, to adjust the priority is to say institutions that have field space already on their, you know, like, so if you have a private school that already has field space on the school grounds itself versus, you know, schools or otherwise that are smaller and don't have, you know, don't have any space.
I think we also use Pittsburgh Public Schools' fields too sometimes, so I think it's a conversation we have to have, and the direct, but we're going to have a public hearing too, we're here for the public. That's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, you want to offer your motion to amend now?
Motion to amend, uh, I forgot the bill number. This is, uh, bill number 860. Motion to amend, what's on the table? With what we have on the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just going to abstain on the, on the.
Want to abstain? The bill has been amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? I have a, Councilman Coghill.
Okay, thank you. No, I just, uh, feel the duty to make sure that, and I do see it's the, the fifth priority for adult leagues, for our older athletes, my being one of them, I have played in, you know, 55-year-old, in over softball league this year. But, uh, you know, I think it's very important, um, you know, a lot of the people my age who still enjoy sports, these are the same men and women who are coaches and involved in the athletic organizations, and they take it very, very seriously. And I'm still limping around from, uh, this past season, but, but I just want to make sure that that priority does include our city residents. I like the idea of focusing on city residents, but for the adult leagues as well, um, you know, I think there's a lot of satisfaction and joy that adults get from it too, and they are the ones that are actually paying the taxes, so, thanks.
You. Any further discussion? If, if not, I have a quick question, Councilman, and maybe we can answer it offline. Is there a definition for fully completed athletic field? I'm just trying to think in my mind what exactly that means.
On the bill completely memorized, where is it at?
In the first priority for a fully.
How, how, uh, each priority, yeah. Uh, good question. I think that.
Okay.
That's something that, you want to come up and explain? Yeah, I'll call the DBW director, because a lot of this was, you know, language that we coordinated on.
Director, if you would also introduce yourself and your, and your title for the public certification.
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works. Um, the fully completed athletic field and court permit applications, so, um, you know, the, um, fully completed application is, um, you know, it's a pretty, it's a pretty exhaustive process. Um, you know, we go through several rounds where folks, um, you know, request field time, um, share with us their rosters, um, you know, we kind of validate those times with them. Um, so that's just ensuring that everybody that's participating in the process and doing a good job is kind of fully answering all the questions that we ask during that process. Those will come, those questions will be around, you know, the types of fields that they want to use, um, any requested alternates if their times are not available, as well as, you know, the number of, uh, participants they're serving, um, and then developing, um, that roster with them, so we can kind of validate that the folks that they have are, um, indeed, um, done. What we've seen in the past is, um, and why we institute that policy, um, is because, um, you know, organizations might, um, for lack of a better term, game the system whereby they might request time for, you know, 200 youth and only, um, you know, when we go to review the, review the activity, it was only 100 youth were showing up. Um, and because of the, you know, aforementioned limitations that we have with field time and requests, um, you know, every hour is precious.
Thank you. And then regarding first priority going to PPS, I'm just trying to think it through as to understand why. Is it because potentially, at least I know with my children, um, when they played sports that were after school, they generally didn't get to the field until approximately 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock? Is that the rationale for why PPS would be given first priority specifically between 2:30 and 5?
Yes, correct. We want to give them that opportunity while the kids were, you know, there at school, um, so they could ensure that that was the best available time, because, you know, most other youth leagues, um, kids were returning from home, parents were returning from work. Um, and so in our experience, um, you know, that was kind of a, a pretty reasonable, um, ask that we could, we could provide in the system, um, to ensure that PPS students had access to facilities right after school with the transportation needs met, um, and still give parents and families time to get home and get settled and have dinner before they started their youth activities.
Thank you. And I'm assuming in doing so that we're also ensuring that whatever PPS students are utilizing our fields aren't doing so while not necessarily utilizing PPS facilities?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I'll have other questions, but I'll certainly speak with the Councilman about it. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill, second round?
Yeah, Director, I just want to commend you, you know, we've, my league, we played in fields in South Park, Bethel Park, throughout the entire South Hills, and I will tell you, our fields were the best maintained, uh, you know, under your direction, I feel like, you know, the men and women who take care of those fields do a job second to none really, so, um, so I want to thank you for that, and, um, they're always after me every, before every game, hey, Coghill, are you going to have that grass cut? Are you going to have that field dragged? And I got to tell you, nine out of 10 times, it is, so, so again, I just wanted to thank you for the, the work that you and, and the Public Works employees put into it.
No, thank you. I think our, our employees do an incredible job maintaining the field. I'd thank the organizations for their partnership too. A lot of the organizations volunteer their own time, um, to help maintain it, like, we honor that. Um, we think that that's really important to have that kind of a community engagement and buy-in from local organizations, helping take care of the fields and make them just the best that we possibly can for, for all residents.
I thought you were going to bring up the snow.
What's snow? Is it snow? Thank God for the rain.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Wilson, you want to offer up a motion to hold now?
Yeah, uh, motion to hold, anything? One, two? Let's, motion to hold one week.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Councilman cross-chammed it, I missed what she said, I'm sorry.
Motion to hold one week.
One week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Thank you. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. We have one new paper, Bill 1130.
Bill 1130, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Oakland Connector Four Mile Run by $1,400,000 and Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation and Senior Centers by $1,000,000 and Play Area Improvements by $400,000.
A motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so, um, just to, just to clarify, so, um, these were funds, as, um, as many of you know, the Mayor Ganey, uh, canceled the Mon Oakland Connector Shuttle Road Project, and, uh, so there are remaining funds in that project, most of which, and it's about a, a roughly $6.7 million, uh, most of which is, was intended to go toward various improvements to existing bike and ped infrastructure, but existing infrastructure, right? So, um, uh, which, you know, for the communities in, in, in that area is much lower priority than some of these other things, in particular, um, improvements to the Burgwin Rec Center, uh, they need a new HVAC system. This is a, 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 a city building that's run by volunteers in the, you know, with after-school programs run by volunteers in the community. The heating system is just this giant noisy, you know, ancient heating system, so, um, that's something they need so they can be warm in the winter and, uh, you know, comfortable in the summer. Um, another, the other project is to, um, uh, build a new playground in the Gates Manor, near the Gates Manor area of Lincoln Park, which is a large resident, a large and growing residential community that, um, with lots of young kids, that does not actually have a playground within a reasonable distance, a reasonable walking distance. Um, so that, um, that is a project that we need to dive into, you know, talk with the community, et cetera, but, um, uh, and then going forward, not in this, but just to keep in mind going forward, there are other, um, other priorities such as sidewalks, uh, from imaging, from Glen Hazel down to Browns Hill Road, where there are lots of amenities and there's no sidewalks right now, it's a very dark scary road going down there, about halfway down, you just, the sidewalk ends, so that's a project we'd like to see. And also, um, improvements to Lewis Playground in Hazelwood, which has a crumbling retaining wall and other issues, as well as, um, the playground in Four Mile Run. So that's just some future-looking things that we're, um, exploring with, with this, with these funds, but I just wanted to clarify where the funds came from and why, um, why we're moving them to higher priority, um, higher priority projects, uh, throughout the district.
Now, I just, I, I really want to say congratulations. I know that you were working on this before you actually took the oath of office here, so, you know, it's good to see it, you know, you stuck with it, came to fruition, and you're redirecting that money into things that you know where the community wants it. And I think the council members, you know, we know our district's better than anybody, so, uh, good job. I hope you, you know, uh, redirect the rest of the money to other needs that you might have, and, um, you're off to a good start.
Thank you. Oh, and I also want to add that, um, just for the, for the, the, the bike folks, um, I am, I am in conversation with Bike Pittsburgh and with Domi to look at those areas, to see what we can do to, to, to improve, you know, the bike ability in, in those, in that bike infrastructure in simpler ways, that, you know, so that's, that's what we're, we're going to look at that as well. So I haven't forgotten about.
Don't forget the bike people.
Yeah, I never forget the bike people. And we're bike people too, so, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That brings us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernmental Affairs and Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Rose, and we have one paper, Bill 1126.
Bill 1126, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 939 West North Avenue at Parcels Number 22S-126 and 22S-113.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just going to defer to the council members. I'm not sure actually if it's Councilwoman Wilson or Councilwoman LaBelle, and just make sure they're supportive of the project.
I believe this is Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I'm supportive. It's in, I'm looking at, it's in my district. It's actually, yeah, so I'm actually happy they're doing this. I'm supportive, yep.
I support you then.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Before exhausting our agenda, um, there was a bill that Madam President introduced yesterday that needs held for a public hearing. It's Bill 1157. Um, for, unfortunately, she didn't make the motion yesterday, so it could be on today's agenda. So Madam President, will you make a motion to waive Rule 8, so this can be read into today's agenda?
Yes, a motion to waive her weight so that bill can be read into today's agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Would a clerk please read Bill 1157?
Bill 1157, Resolution Naming the Lower Herschel Park Field as Dan Barry Field.
Motion to.
Motion to hold for a public.
Motion to hold. Motion to hold for a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All those.
Brief discussion.
Brief discussion.
As a Councilman, I fully support it. Um, did we, did we do that right? I think we did, right?
Yes, we did it correctly.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're working on.
Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President has a time crunch, which is why she's trying to move this quicker.
Thank you.
All those in favor of holding for a cable cast public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill will be held for a cable cast public hearing. Now that exhausts our agenda for today, we do have meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:30, with sessions at 1:00 and 2:15, council will hold a briefing on the operating budget grants. Next week, council will hold our regular standing committee meetings on Tuesday, January 21st, and Wednesday, January 1st at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, next Tuesday, January 31st at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on the state of policing in the city of Pittsburgh, which will be chaired by Councilman Coghill. Is there anything else for members? Madam, uh, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just quickly, um, say, uh, um, uh, say thank you to Mayor Ganey's office for the executive order, uh, that was announced to review tax-exempt properties in the city of Pittsburgh. This is something that is long overdue. Um, we know that we have lots of, lots of nonprofit organizations that hold, I think, it's about 20% of the, of the properties here, and property taxes are a large burden on our residents, and so, you know, this is long overdue. I'm excited to see this, um, I'm excited to see this happening, and, um, I also, just because, um, if you remember, a, a couple of weeks ago, a gentleman named Darwin Loiba, he is the O'Hara Township Auditor, came here and presented to us a very comprehensive review of UPMC's parking garages, uh, and, and, uh, you know, a great analysis of, of the, the money that we could be bringing back, back into, into the fund if we were taxing these parking lots accordingly. So I encourage the administration perhaps to start there, um, but yeah, all in all, I was very happy to see that this morning or yesterday, whenever that was announced. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess, I saw you turn your camera on. Nope? Okay. If not, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.